All right, good evening everyone and welcome to the April 21st meeting of the Falmis zoning board of appeals. I'll forego my usual comments at the moment because we do have executive schedule session scheduled for 6:15. It states that under MGL's chapter 38, section 21A3, meeting with town council relating to the appeal of Ten Beach Farm House in Hatchville, Clower, the board will open in public session, vote to enter into executive session, and then will return, or vote to return back into public session after the close of executive session. So as the chair, I'm making the determination that under MGL, that any discussion the board would have had would have, regarding this appeal, would have detrimental effect on the board's litigation or negotiating power. So with that having been said, I will make the motion to convene into executive session under MGL 38, section 21A3, for the discussion, meeting with town council relating to the appeal of Ten Beach Farm House. Added to that motion, we refer into executive session and we will then reconvene into public session after the close of executive session. So that's the motion.
Second.
It's second by Scott, and I'll vote since it is executive session. James?
James Morseide.
Scott?
Scott Solinsky.
TJ Howery, aye?
Robert Dugan, aye.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse on the executive session.
Understood.
I stayed so you'd have a quorum to go into executive session and come back, but you only need three.
Sounds good.
Read.
Agreed. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, so sorry everyone, you'll have to remove yourself from the room from now, but we will... All right, good evening everyone again and welcome to the Falmis zoning board of appeals meeting for April 21st. I want to thank everyone for your patience because our time with town council regarding executive session did go over, so thank you everyone once again for that. Calling the meeting to order again and ask everyone to please silence their cellphones at this time. I'll introduce the board, starting at my far left. Your far right is James Morse, who is a full voting member of the board. To his left is Scott Solinsky, who is the board's vice chair. My name is TJ Howery, I'm the chair of the board. To my left is Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the common law. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant, from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read a public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant, or the applicant's representative, will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should only be directed at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium, excuse me. We ask you to please state your name and address for the record. We do limit public comment to two minutes per person, and while you're up there, we do ask you to stay behind the podium and speak into the microphone. That microphone is not for amplification purposes within this room, it's for the benefit of those watching on FCTV at home. We will then either close or continue the hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in file, in the file to make a decision. By motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves, make a motion to deny or approve that would be made and voted upon. Such a motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So returning to our agenda for the night, we have executive session that was scheduled for 6:15. We do have public comment. We have four continuations, three new hearings, and we have a few items on our open meeting item as well. So first up, we did take care of executive session. We do have public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if you're out there waiting to comment on a project, just wait for the appropriate portion of the evening to be recognized. But for now, is there anyone out there with something to say that is not on the agenda? All right, not seeing anyone, moving right along to our continuations. We have application 57-17M, North Star Place LLC, 123 Brick Hill Road in East Falmouth, requesting a modification to comprehensive permit number 57-17 to allow modifications to previously approved plans. Voting members on this project are myself, Scott Solinsky, Bob Dugan, and James Morse.
So, Mr. Chairman, we also had submitted to the file tonight the information regarding the curbs, the curb stops and the bump stops for the individual driveways, as well as they submitted an updated plan.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob. And Mr. Marioni.
Good evening. Nick Marioni for the applicant, North Stop Place LLC. I'll start with the corrections to the as-built drawing, which I have up on the screen. You see at the beginning of the project, we've moved the fence off the corner of the property, and the sidewalk's been corrected where it's now fully on, on our own property, not on the abutters. There were no issues with the encroachments on the backside. I just want to bring up a photo to show the... This is the correction that was made. It's been landscaped, not hydroceded. It was supposed to be hydroceded today. This picture was taken yesterday.
Nick, is that the same grade?
Yes, it is.
Same grade as the last one, you just moved it over?
Just moved it over.
Okay.
All right, then the other open issue that we had was the curb stops. And the issue was raised at the last meeting about whether or not we had room on the handicap units for the wheelchairs to pass through. So we had the engineer do a detail of the parking spaces. This is, this detail A relates to building eight. I'll bring that up in a second, but I just wanted to show you, we use, the curb stops are six foot wide and the, we're three feet off the front porch. There's five feet in between the curb stops, there's room to make more, to put more. As you can see, we could go wider to the property line. And that's the detail for this space right here at building eight.
It goes to concrete with rebar and holdup?
Concrete with rebar. I have details on that too.
Thank you.
That's the curb stop. And then, this parking standards show, that's for a van. This is for handicap parking spaces that you have to have five feet between to get a wheelchair through, and it's 96 inches per space. So eight feet per space plus five feet for the wheelchair to get between them. The curb stops are only six feet wide and the spaces are eight feet. So as to the question as to whether or not we could do a curb stops and there'd still be room to get a wheelchair through, I think, I think we've met that.
Just showing 18 feet from the curb stop back, obviously the car overhangs the front of it a little bit, which will, which will scoot your car up into that spot a little more.
Right.
So it actually give you probably 20, eight, 19, 20 feet, right?
Yes, it does. And we're three feet off the front porch, so.
Okay.
So those were, if I remember correctly, those are the two outstanding issues from the last meeting. So if that satisfies the board as to the curb stops versus bollards, and the as-built, which is stamped by the engineer and the surveyor certifying that we're off the abutters property, I hope that closes this out.
Sounds good. We'll turn it to board questions, just to see if we do have any. James, anything?
The curb stops fixed in the ground, any type of spike or anything? Just concern it during snow plowing, they get dislodged or otherwise moved?
Sometimes in the winter you move them if you get a big storm. They'll stop the plow, they're put in with rebar.
Okay, thank you.
And there's no utilities under there, there's no gas or anything under there that there'd be?
No, all the gas lines are between the parking areas.
And the rebar would be flushed down so they don't have the sharp edges? And this isn't, this isn't anything but, because I've forgotten what we spoke about. This has nothing to do with yes or no tonight. When we talked about the access cover for the pump station, what did we end up doing with that? I've forgotten, forgive me. Was that, that was an H20, did we plant over that, or is it a now parking space?
No, it's still, I think I have pictures of it, but it's still un-lanscaped, just the cover there, it is an H20 tank.
Then that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, Bob, anything?
No, they handled all the questions I had.
All right. The questions I had were already addressed, so public comment, are there any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project out there tonight? Anyone at all? Not seeing anyone, back to the board.
Motion to close, second.
Motion closed made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken.
May I ask one question? I don't know if we, I'm beyond that, but what we're hoping to do is, after we install, not have to have to come back for another meeting to get the money released by the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, we're hoping that we can either have Noreen come out and view it, and, or we can send pictures in, whichever, so we don't have to...
Is it worked on already?
No, no, we, well, we hadn't been, no, no, the curb stops haven't been approved.
Okay.
But now that they're approved, we've got them ready to go.
Well, you know the answer to that question then, don't you?
Well, I'm saying, we'll put them in, take pictures, and, or do we need another meeting for you to come back and say, yep, they're in?
Not necessarily by you, but I've heard that before.
So maybe we do these individually, so then...
Hearing is closed. Yep, go ahead, Bob.
So then I make a motion to accept the changes on the plan in regarding to the curb stops that also show the detailing on the handicap accessible units, which allows proper spacing for required access.
All right, so motion was made by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And then I would make a motion to accept the plan showing the corrected sidewalk and fencing that was removed off of the adjacent property. Sidewalk is in, and the grass will be seeded.
All right, so motion was made by Bob, is there a second?
Second.
Second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob?
And then we would, we would add a condition that once all the, all this work has been completed, the zoning administrator could review the completed work, and once the work is completed, then they can deal with getting the monies released from the town on the balance that's left.
All right, so that was a motion made by Bob, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Marioni, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, up next we have application 113-21, Miranda, 105 Riddlands Road in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit slash variance to allow a home occupation for indoor swimming lessons slash aqua lessons. Voting members on this project are myself, Scott Solinsky, Bob Dugan, James Morse, and Scott Peterson. Scott Peterson is not here tonight, so it'll be the four of us. Mr. McKenzie?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm working together with Anthony Panobianco on behalf of Sandy Miranda in her efforts to provide necessary and desirable services to the community through the use of her in-ground pool at her house. Anthony recently filed a request to, with the board to withdraw her application without prejudice. I just want to make a brief statement in support of that. At the first meeting, there were several complimentary comments from the board members of Sandy's efforts and the services that she would be providing, but as Rob pointed out very quickly, she could not comply with the requirements of the section of our bylaw, namely 24162 for home occupation that she applied under. In particular, she couldn't comply with the 30% limitation on the size of the home occupation of the accessory structure. And while the board made note of her fine services and committed those efforts, this board doesn't have the power to waive those requirements of that bylaw. So Sandy asked me to thank the members for your kind comments, and she wanted to thank all of her supporters that came with her, and we ask that you look favorably on her request to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. Would the applicant have any intention of reapplying to this board under any other bylaw? Is that her intent?
Yes, yes it is.
Okay. So then that would be why you're looking for the draw prejudice, because of course, if we deny it with prejudice, he can't come back for two years.
That's right, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, maybe some board discussion?
Sure, if you want to have it.
So, you know, we did agree to the, to the extension, the last extension, to continue to tonight. I did ask the representative, the attorney she had at the time, if we granted her the continuation, would they be able to comply with the bylaw including the 30%? Because at that time, I couldn't figure out how they could comply. His answer at the time was yes, they would be coming back tonight with changes of plan showing that they would comply to the bylaw. I understand the, that they can't, what Mr. McKenzie said this evening. The worry I have with the withdrawal is that, as far as the file goes, the pool was originally given a permit for personal use. We've got information coming from the building department, information coming from the health department. At no time did they think this would be public access at all. They did do a cease and desist on the property. So this isn't a situation where we have where somebody is proposing something to be done, it's something that already exists. With testimony between the first meeting and the next meeting, we had information submitted to the file that there may have, may or may not have been, I don't know, but there was a fundraiser plan to do additional changes to the property in order to make it comply with the bylaw, which we kind of gave a warning in advance at saying, you know, don't do any additional work at this time because there's a good chance that we can't get the permit. You know, there's other things it didn't comply with. It didn't comply with the parking, the traffic, there's, there's other issues here. I worry about going straight with a withdrawal when you have properties that have been in violation and that other town departments have now gotten involved with. So we don't have any new information that's coming with it tonight. I would be more interested in doing a decision on the property and doing a denial on the application that was done, or if not, a withdrawal with prejudice, listing out the issues that it just doesn't comply with. It's a unique situation because something had happened and was stopped.
Well, it certainly is.
We're also dealing with something that at one point other towns were using it, there was contracts that went out, there seemed to be testimony that there might have been other people using the pool for classes. I do have some worries that changes may have been done with monies that, again, it's not this board, but if, if there was a fundraiser and those people relied that they were doing changes to get this permit to be allowed, the changes that we're making still wouldn't have gotten by this bylaw to get this permit allowed. So that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but something just occurred to me.
Would it be appropriate to come out of discussion mode and open this for one question to the applicant's rep?
Sure, if you want to. We just need to make the motion.
I make a motion to come out of the discussion period and open this for a question to the applicant.
Motion was made by Scott, second by James, all those in favor?
Sorry, I should have thought of it prior, but something just occurred to me. You just said that you're going to be reapplying under another, another bylaw. So if you already know what that bylaw is, why didn't you amend it prior to asking for withdrawal?
Because we thought, talked with Anthony and spoke with Noreen about whether the wiser course of action would be to withdraw it and come back with a whole new application under an appropriate section of the bylaw, which wouldn't have a 30% limitation, and that it would be such of a change that it was better to withdraw rather than to come in and try to modify it.
That was, you guys came up with that, not, not the administrator?
No, we had a discussion with Noreen as to what would be the most appropriate.
But you wouldn't have been able to amend that, leaving this open?
It would be such an amendment from home occupation, because that had all the, when it was applied for, that had all limitations that she could never meet under. And we believe that a new application that will come in would be approvable.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you guys.
The last hearing, I asked the attorney who was here how they were going to get over, this seems to be a use variance, and my specific question is, how are you going to get around 48 section 10? I was told that that was going to be addressed here. I just don't see that request is before this board. How are you going to get past this with a request for an extension or a reapplication? This is not a permissible activity in this area, and there's nothing, there's been no evidence about topography or anything that makes it unusual that would allow this board to grant that variance.
Right, and typically this board in this town does not grant use variances anyway, but we wouldn't be looking for a use variance, but we're looking for any variance with the new application.
We obviously can't hear that case now.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. All right, any other comments from the board? Well, I suppose this half the table, what do you...
We get to go back into discussion?
Yeah.
Make a motion to close.
All right, motion to close made by Scott, second?
Aye, a second.
Second by Bob, all those in favor?
Aye. So we, we're back into discussion.
Yep.
Here's how I look at it. Even though, I mean, it's pretty frustrating to request what we were looking for previous, but with the good that it's going to do, if they can come up with something that fits the legality of the bylaw, then, you know, there's, there are people out there that literally use this, and it's a benefit to them, Bob. I understand where you're coming from, but if they can be creative and they can come back, I don't think that they should have to wait two years to come back with that because I think then, you know, it may not, it may not work and it may get denied. But personally, I believe they, if they don't use it while they're reapplying for this and it doesn't become a cease and desist order or any of that, and they do it correctly and come back before the board, I would be in favor to allow them to withdraw without prejudice.
I tend to agree with you, Scott. At the time that the application was made, I believe the applicant was not represented by an attorney, making the application under those bylaw, under the bylaw and under the variance.
Given her the benefit that she got some bad advice, I mean, I agree.
All right.
To the administrator, where does that leave us then? The cease and desist order is still in effect if this, the application is allowed to be withdrawn?
I mean, there's actually no record, right? There's no record that...
There would be essentially a continued prohibition to operate any type of business there absent approval.
I would certainly be opposed to some kind of misunderstanding where somebody leaves here and thinks they're good to go until this gets adjudicated through us, and I don't mean that. I mean, nothing happens until it comes back.
I'm not opposed to a withdrawal is, if that's where the positioning procedurally is, that the applicant understands that this cannot be, you can't, you can't do a commercial business until this issue's resolved.
Absolutely understood.
I don't have a problem to allow withdrawal so that they can reapply, but I just, I don't want the neighbors walking away saying the ZBA is not enforcing the zoning.
You can always make that part of a potential motion.
Yeah, I think if you're inclined to allow that request, you can specify that you're allowing the withdrawal, but under the condition that there is no permission to operate a business.
That's certainly within our purview, so, I mean, I don't know why that wouldn't be part of the, the motion.
All right, so would anyone like to make a motion to that effect?
So does that have any effect at all with the building or health department? Because they said it was a cease and desist and then they applied here.
Not until it comes back before the board.
That's still standing.
The only issue I have, and this is just, maybe it's semantics, they're gonna, they're saying they're going to apply under another section of the bylaw. We have no idea what other section of the bylaw is. I would have liked, again, them to come and say, this is the section we're looking at, and I could completely, completely wrong, but I couldn't find anything that it fits under. I just want to make sure that whatever we do tonight, there is no further activity on that property, having to do with a business, people coming and going, because it'll be the same thing that happened before. At that point, the neighbors are going to have to do something with the board if activity doesn't cease. And there is nothing written anywhere that says that they've come to us that we list why it isn't allowed. Can we, in a withdrawal, explain why it isn't allowed? I mean, a withdrawal is, I think, are pretty, they just withdraw, I didn't think we could condition a withdrawal. I've never heard of withdrawal being conditioned.
Well, it's all right.
I don't, I don't see any prohibition to expressing that you're allowing the withdrawal and it's on the condition that because you did not grant permission for a business, you know, operating there, that there is no permission.
I've never seen a withdrawal on any permit ever be conditioned. Are we allowed to condition a withdrawal?
I don't see why not. I think you can specify that you're allow, if you choose to vote for the withdrawal, that it's on the condition and under the specification that you are not granting any continued business use absent a future application and an approval.
Let me, let me ask you a question, Noreen. Then why, obviously they're working up their new approach to this. It would be a simple, I think that we should talk to town council and see if that's allowable.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to get details.
Before we do that, because it's not like they're waiting on us, I mean...
No, well, here's the other possibility, is that you say nothing. No, well, here's the other possibility, is that you say nothing, but because you allow the withdrawal, they still do not have permission, which means they are subject to enforcement.
Right. I, I think that it would be prudent for us to at least seek some kind of guidance, conditions on, on, on a withdrawal, Bob.
Yeah, if, if the board considers withdrawal, I'd want to have something from, that says we can condition. I would be okay with a withdrawal as long as we could put in there that this, under what they applied for, it's not allowed use, and the use at this point shouldn't be handling on the property.
Bob, can you remind, was the application just for a special permit, or was it-
Special permit and a use variance, it's both.
Did it involve an, an appeal of a building commissioner's decision, or was it-
No, so what happened is, so the, the building department put a cease and desist because of a complaint that came in, so zoning enforcement, so instead of anything coming directly to us, the applicant decided to apply to us to see if they could get it put through legally to get around the cease and desist, that showed it was illegal use. From the day the application went in, and, and, you know, I know that she did have counsel at one point, the day the application went in, anyone reading it could understand you could not make the 30%, just as impossible the way that it's set up. And then you had the same thing with the parking and the traffic issue, so it would, it would have never complied under the, under this, and then you couldn't get the use variance, like James said, it doesn't have any topography issues, it has no, what we would consider a hardship, and there's no really uniqueness to the law, so it never, it never could have complied, complied. But the last meeting we had, the counsel representing the applicant very clearly stated, if we allow the continuance, he basically said, I will show you, it will comply to the 30%, and I will be coming back and it will all comply.
Right, I do remember he made that presentation.
So, I understand the idea of a, of a withdrawal, and I don't have a, a problem with it if it can be conditioned, but I think we have to find out if it can be conditioned, and if it can't, then we have to have something down that shows that-
Bob, I just identified the avenue to do that.
Yeah, that's what we would do.
I, I think, regardless of what this board decides tonight, I think the cease and desist order still stands-
It would have to.
Through the building department.
It would have to. You've got to give them the benefit of the doubt.
No, I understand that, it, it just seemed that through building and health, they were actually looking to us also to show that it doesn't comply.
Their counsel, their representative indicated through testimony that they had an avenue to do this, and we can't try that or, or listen to that testimony now to satisfy our question, we just have to follow the process, so either we're going to, they're only here for, to withdraw with prejudice or without prejudice. Now, if that satisfies us that we can condition the withdrawal, and that makes you more comfortable, then that's what we have to do, I can't, we can't go beyond what we're talking about now without-
Oh, no, I, I understand, I, I just-
-into a new case with different circumstances.
You know, I, I would, I would be okay with it if I do it could be conditioned, but we would have to find out.
Did we have public comment?
No, we didn't have public comment.
We need to reopen, ask for public comment before we make any decision, in fairness to anyone who might be in the audience.
Sure, all right. So, James, you want to make a-
I'll make a motion to reopen for the purpose of public comment.
A second.
All right, motion to reopen made by James, second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, and apologies to everyone, is there anyone out there with public comment regarding this application tonight?
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman?
I'll second.
Covering third base.
Can't say that we're not covering procedure tonight.
Don't want to be arbitrary or capricious.
That's right. Okay, so the motion to close again was made by Scott, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're closed for once again. All right.
So I would be interested in continuing this to get feedback from town council on whether a withdrawal can be conditioned.
Well, not, sorry to interrupt, I guess here's your other possibility, is that, as you point out, the, um, building department and the board of health already have standing orders in place that could only be overridden by you granting a permit here, so if you do not grant a permit, meaning if you deny or accept a withdrawal, those remain in place.
Right.
So-
I still want a legal opinion personally, though.
Sure.
I do, anyway.
And Bob does.
There you go.
James, you either weigh on this?
That's fine, yeah, either, yeah, I don't mind having town council weigh in.
All right. I'll say the same then. All right, would anyone like to make that motion?
What, what's our next, we don't need a, it should be pretty quick once we get an answer, so.
Uh, so our next meeting is May 5th, so do you just want to-
May what?
May 5th, for a vote.
Yeah, so then I would continue the hearing to May 5th in order for the board to get information from town council.
Mr. Chairman, convenient for the applicant, just to make sure they can be here.
Sure, Mr. McKenzie, are you available on May 5th?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, Bob, you were making that motion?
Yeah, so to continue to May 5th, so the board can get information from town council on if a withdrawal can be conditioned.
I'll second.
All right, motion was made by Bob to continue to May 5th, pending opinion from town council, second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Mr. McKenzie, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, thank you, Noreen.
Okay, up next, we have application 16-21R, court remand, court ordered remand. Noonan, 183 Surf Drive in Falmouth, requesting special permit to raise and rebuild a non-conforming dwelling, increasing law coverage by structures. Voting members on this project are myself, Scott Solinsky, Bob Dugan, James Morris, and Scott Peterson.
Is there representative, I'm coming to me.
Uh, that was my understanding, do you want to-
Why don't we table this one?
You might be listening and make a quick run, yep.
This, on a remand, don't you have to have a full complement of the board?
I, we do, and-
I think that's going to be the issue.
All right, so are we going to table it?
Yeah, because we did, we did let-
Or is there a rep coming?
Yeah, so we let Mr. Clower know-
The more we talk, the more he might-
Yeah, maybe he'll-
I'm running over the street.
So we let him know that there wouldn't be a full complement tonight of five members, that the next member would be available for the next meeting, but he still needs to appear because we have to get a, um, extension, so why don't we table Noonan till later in the evening?
Motion, I'll say, move it.
We will table application 16-21R, motion is made by Scott, second by Bob, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that's the end. Up next, we have application 12-22 Buca Corp., 7 and 22 Nathan S Ellis Highway in North Falmouth, requesting a modification of special permit 23-88 to construct an addition and to allow the installation of an outdoor bar slash seating area. Voting members on this project are myself, Scott Solinsky, Bob Dugan, James Morris, and Jerry Patonis.
Uh, we did receive a couple letters, so, um, the first one dated Thursday, April 21st, and this is from, uh, Robert Manning at 30 Nathan Ellis Highway. Dear zoning board of appeals, my name is Robert Manning, I reside at 30 Nathan S Ellis Highway in North Falmouth, and writing in regard to the pending application titled 12-22 Buca Corp. This application concerns two parcels of property numbered 7 and 22 Nathan S Ellis Highway. Buca Corp., Mr. Jarvis appeared before the board on April 7, 2022, seeking modification of special permit. I appeared at the hearing, uh, on April 7th date, and I voiced my concerns over the potential noise and traffic issues if the application were to be modified, the hearing was continued to April 21st for further submissions. During the intervening period, I have had the opportunity to review the application, plans for the building of the outdoor bar and seating area, and also met with Mr. Jarvis on two separate occasions. Mr. Jarvis invited neighbors down to his establishment on April 16, 2022, and walked us through the proposed changes to the outside area. At this time, I would like to voice my support for the outdoor bar and seating improvements. Mr. Jarvis outlining his plans for further fencing and tree planting to alleviate any noise concerns that any neighbors may have. While I understand there may be other issues concerning the modification of the special permit, it is my opinion Mr. Jarvis has and will continue to address the neighbors' concerns regarding noise and traffic issues, and again, he would express his support for Buca Corp.'s continued improvements of the outdoor seating area at 7 Nathan S Ellis Highway. And there is one from April 19th, from a Phyllis, uh, from a Patricia Cusack. Dear Selectmen, this was actually to the Select Board, but sent to us. I'm writing regarding the special permit application made by Bucatina's Restaurant, my property is at 16 Beeman Lane, which abuts the outside seating area. Mr. Jarvis has my permission to install a privacy fence and arborvitae trees along the property line to enhance and minimize, uh, to enhance privacy and minimize noise. If you have any questions, she left her mailing address at 56 Parsons Street in Newton, Mass. We did get a new plan to the file that Mr. Lepers can review, the plan did show some additional parking, it doesn't appear that the fencing or the privacy screen currently appear on the new plan. That should be it.
All right, Attorney Lepers.
Thank you. Good evening. We were here a couple of weeks ago, uh, and we had a couple of concerns, if you recall, and one of them was, uh, what type of noise, what kind of problems are we going to have, what issues, we're going to come up with the abutters? And I was, uh, when I spoke to the board, I was very confident that Mr. Jarvis would be able to alleviate the concerns of the abutters, and I think the letters that you have tonight in support of the application indicate just that. I don't know, and I don't, I'm not sure whether we have any other abutters here tonight or not. We did revise the, um, plan to show additional parking, uh, and, uh, Mr. Dugan is correct. The area on the plan, I don't know if we can, we can get it up on the screen here tonight or not, uh... On the plan, I believe that Mr. Dugan has in front of him, there is an area that says chain links, that is, on the, uh, it's on the southern parcel, on the southern parcel, the Bucatina parcel on the east side, and we are proposing stockade fence and plantings. The area that we are talking about-
You can draw every little arrow with a mouse down there.
All right, if I could.
Mouse is right there.
Okay, the area in question would be this area here, uh, from approximately this point up to this point, uh, where there is an existing chain link fence. We plan to erect a stockade fence and have arborvitae plantings all along this area, and I know that Mr. Jarvis and Ms. Cusack spoke at length about it, and I think the letter speaks for itself. Mr. Manning, uh, wrote a very eloquent letter, uh, Mr. Manning himself is an attorney, as is Ms. Kerwin, uh, who spoke, uh, last week as well, they live together, so I'm certainly assuming she's on board with Mr. Manning's letter, um, as well. So I think that issue has been fairly well addressed. A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Dugan also, um, indicated he had some concerns, uh, about parking, and could we go out and, uh, essentially find some more? The answer is yes, we did. This plan that you have before you tonight has an additional 17 spaces shown, we go from 82 to 99, and, uh, Mr. Martin has also, uh, shown on the plan, um, the parking reduction calculation of, um, the 25% reduction waiver, which would essentially, on, on an occupancy of 256, call for, uh, I believe it calls for 96 required spaces in, if, in a conforming, completely conforming parking situation. We, we are now showing 99, so we're actually beyond the 96, if you consider the, the parking reduction, the byright parking reduction. Uh, I would also suggest this, um, again, we're before the board of appeals tonight because there are many aspects of this project, uh, that are non-conforming. This, the, the parking that has existed has always been less than is required, it's non-conforming. We are upping the, uh, we are upping the ante by 17 spaces, and as I represented it before the board last time, notwithstanding the fact that the prior special permit, uh, mentioned an occupancy of 165, the town has been, the building department has been using the number 256 here ever since Mr. Jarvis purchased the property, and I did go down to the building department, prior owners had numbers well above 165 as well. So I, I, I would suggest to you that the 165 is not a good number, the, the number is, uh, ought to be, and we're hoping that the board could reflect in a decision that the occupancy number be 256, and we think we're showing, uh, we think we're showing conforming parking, uh, 100% at this point. So, um, other than that, uh, let's not forget the, the basics why we're here, it's a, it's a relatively small outdoor bar, and we're enclosing this area that's, uh, sort of jutting inward in the, in the building, on the, on the south side of the building, a relatively, relatively benign request, uh, certainly in terms of the kitchen, you know, the outside bar, 16 seats, we're not increasing occupancy at all. So, uh, you know, we're hopeful, uh, this whole thing started, you know, due to COVID, and we found that there was demand for, for this outside seating, um, and I, and I think we've seen, we're also seeing in other parts of town as well. Uh, Mr. Jarvis, I think, has demonstrated himself to be a very good operative, operator of the restaurant, uh, you know, he's keeping his neighbors happy, um, it's really something that, uh, that we're quite desirous of, of, of obtaining, and I, I certainly hope the board looks favorably on the application, we're here to answer any questions you might have, uh, our, our contractor's here, Dave Martin, our engineer is here, Steve McKenzie's here, I think we've got a pretty good team, uh, if you have any questions.
Attorney Lepers, Bob, any questions?
Uh, no, I mean, they increased the parking, I think it's great that they spoke to the neighbors, I guess my only question would be, does any of the parking, none of the parking changes your, um, law coverage, correct?
Uh, no, the park, well, the parking on the north parcel, uh, does not, because that was, that area was already paved, uh, there's a slight, uh, increase, I think, on the southern parcel, but, uh, parking by, um, by structure paving and parking, I think the, the number is 70 under the bylaw, and then Dave tells me we're at about 40, and I'm right there, 45. Forty, I'm sorry, 45, so-
So you don't have to worry about keeping your grasp there.
So we're not, we don't, we don't have, we don't even come close to having a problem on the southerly parcel, so I think we're good there.
Okay. All right, I, I don't have any questions then.
All right, thanks, Bob. Scott, anything?
Attorney Lepers, it doesn't change any delivery, it doesn't encumber any of your delivery, uh, from the back?
Uh, no, no, I, I, I'm, I'm not aware of any, uh, any proposed changes in scheduling of deliveries or any-
No, 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 I'm talking about the extra, the, the extra parking doesn't force them to do something that they're not already doing.
Um, perhaps David, the-
All right, for the record, David Martin, site engineer, uh, to answer your question, Liz Solinsky, we did not place parking, uh, at the rear of the building where presently deliveries were made, so it, so the, uh, deliveries are sort of in the center of the building, where it's void to park.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
James, anything?
Parking in the rear, counsel primarily for employees or users, employees?
That, that, it's, it's traditionally been that way, yes, and we, again, we don't believe we've really had a problem with parking to begin with, but we understand the bylaw has a number that we're trying to meet, but, yes, we, we don't anticipate an intensive use of the parking on the southerly parcel, uh, it, it's mainly employees, it's mainly, uh, you know, staff.
My question just bounces off about the issue of delivery, those vehicles will be able to move if the, so the delivery truck can get back-
Yes, and as Mr. Martin pointed out, there is an area, I think, that, that, for deliveries that would not interfere with the parking, as, as demonstrated on the plan.
Thank you.
All right, my concerns have already been addressed, three questions, board, uh, public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? We see none, back to the board.
There's no questions, I guess a motion to close?
All right, motion closed made by Bob, second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony. Have a little more discussion at all, or?
I, I got to tell you, I really love the fact that people are starting to get it with getting out and speaking to their abutters and resolving issues, and they're starting to reap the benefit of being able to do that.
I agree.
I, I really commend the applicant for doing that, because far too many times we worry about abutters and their rights, and to see, um, an applicant go out and, and totally change someone's opinion and make them happy is very admirable, in my, in my opinion.
All right, I agree, I agree with you, Scott, and, um, depending what was done in between the last hearing and the one tonight, um, I, I may have been leaning toward granting some provisional approval, maybe for coming back in a year, just to see how things are going, um, but based upon the representations made by Attorney Lepers tonight and the additional letters in the file from Mr. Manning and the other abutter, my apologies, I, I didn't quite write down her name.
Cusack.
Cusack. Um, I'd, I'd be willing to, to grant a full permission with appropriate conditions.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, he's done a great job, I, I mean, the Jarvis's have always reached out to the community, but I, I think it's great that he met with the neighbors, I, I'm also thrilled that they were able to fit the parking in, and, and again, this wasn't an issue with the board, it was an issue- And again, this wasn't an issue with the board, it was an issue with the permit, and goes back to the town. Our permits are based on the bylaw. Our permits have nothing to do with this. So if the building department doesn't check the permit, you know, it's unfortunate they had to do a continuation until tonight. They should have been able to handle this at the last meeting. So just a note to the town, if this situation is coming up for anyone else, you know, try to fix it, so an applicant like this doesn't have to jump through hoops to, you know, to get the use that they need. So if that's everything it says, then I would make a motion to approve with conditions.
One second.
All right. Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott. Findings?
So applicant is doing a small addition to the kitchen area for more prep space. And then they're adding an exterior bar, an exterior seating. They've met with the abutters that had concerns with the project. They've agreed at the easterly property line where these, where the chain link fences to put in a stockade fence and additional arboretum plantings.
Decrease the...
To evade any privacy and, and concerns. They also applied to the selectmen for a license for the parking spaces that were in the roadway. They, they added additional parking on the plan since the first meeting so that they would be able to comply with the bylaw.
Did you put in, did you put the letters from the, the abutters?
Yeah, they'll be in the, in the submitting. Also put in there that the, it appears the property has been given occupancy permit from the town for an occupancy of 256 for many, many years. But the original permit had limited them to 165.
We'd be asking that this permit reflect 256, right?
This permit will reflect the 256. The applicant has made the changes needed in order to get the current occupancy of 256 to fit the bylaw with waiver of the parking reduction.
All right. Anything else for findings?
No, I think that's fine. I mean, I'm going to put a finding, there's never been a complaint regarding parking issues that were submitted. And also put a finding that the, we got a copy of the occupancy permit from the building and health department showing occupancies of 256.
For the record, Norine, you just want to spell out that, you know, the parking is on a separate lot across the street.
Yeah, show that there's two different parcels.
It's not ever been an issue, which is someone looking at the record down the road.
All right. And zoning involved with that, I think, is, is that actually residential on that side?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. We'll also, with findings, maybe conditions?
Yeah. 240, 12.1E, 240, 10.2A.
Conditions?
Actually, these will be listed under, under the findings, too, Norine, I'm sorry.
The new bylaws, yeah?
Yeah, we have to list the new bylaws.
That would be different.
Under the, the only one, I don't know, Norine, you may have to change, but the parking is under 240, 14.1. The last, the waiver was under 240, 107A, and it doesn't seem to be a reference to that section. So whatever the reference to that section is in the new bylaw, you could convert it over, the way, the 25% reduction.
So it doesn't restrict them.
All right. So the reduction is 14.1F.
Okay, so, so 240, 14.1 and 240, 14.1F. Also lists the, the current number of spaces. Their reduction could have gone to 96, but they actually have, I think it was 98. If we go back to conditions, so we would have to condition it to per revised plans, which are to include the, to show where the stockade fence and arboretum plantings will be going in the easterly line. We're going to condition it on an occupancy allowed of 256. And I don't know if you list this under conditions or findings, but do the, do the reduction, so they need the parking spaces, original was 128, that's 256 occupancy, and then we're allowing a 25% reduction, which actually will only allow, will allow them to have 96 parking spaces if they decide to versus the 98.
For the occupancy, you want to list that that includes inside and outside?
Yeah, includes both inside and outside seating. I'm also put in the, put in a finding that they've been using the occupancy of 256 since they've had the business, as the previous businesses did.
Anything else?
I suppose we could put that the administrator can approve the revised plan showing the changes.
All right.
Your building hours, that, I mean...
Yeah, work hours as we normally do. Work vehicles and construction materials to be kept on site.
Plenty of room there for that.
They're not going to need it, but if they ever, if they needed to block any streets, they would have to make arrangements with the police department. And then just, just put a condition there, because it was, let me double check for the health. Just put a condition, no parking on the septic system, because health said it's not an age trend. Also in the findings, listed it's the two separate parcels, the number 22 and number 7. Addition of gutters and drywells for the new roof area at a minimum. Condition upon subsection 99-1, affixing of legible numbers, time limit of compliance. Upon completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence for that subsection.
Won't be a different address, though, will it?
Well, there's no... I think what they're saying is probably address it in back and in front. I mean, I don't know what they're, there's no address they can find. They're on two separate streets, so the private street in back would also have to show the address in back, right?
I think it...
If there's a fire.
I wouldn't think so. I think you would post the address in the front, on the, the street, the appropriate street.
Yeah, so what they're saying is the address to the restaurant doesn't appear to be posted anywhere that they could find at the property.
So they need to have the number posted where it's visible for emergency vehicles.
So, so they would still do that subsection, because there's no address posted. So you can still just make it subject to the subsection. Put in the findings that it was outside Concom jurisdiction. Also put in findings, fight a permanent, no issues with the project. As a condition, the water main and service must be on the plans.
It was added in.
To avoid temporary and permanent utility conflicts. I talked with Phil Hall before, so we can just keep that in the conditions, because if, once it's proposed, it's already met. But if it's a problem, also put, also put a condition that the seating not be increased above the allowed 256 per the health department in the capacity of the current septic system. Also put a finding, the applicant did not have to go in front of planning because the square footage was minor. I think that covers it.
All right. So if that does take your effort, that was a motion made by Bob, seconded by Scott to approve with conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Attorney Love Hertz, thank you to you and your team for a good time tonight.
Yeah, so let's, um...
Yeah, you want to circle back to the...
Yeah, yeah, let's do that first.
All right. So we'll, we'll circle back to application 16-21R, court remand, court ordered remand, got myself again. Noonan, 183 Surf Drive in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the non-conforming dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures. Voting members on this project are myself, Scott Solinsky, Bob Dugan, James Morse, and Scott Peterson. Attorney Clower?
Good evening. I apologize for not being here earlier. I, I didn't, I didn't think I'd have to be for the requested continuance, but regardless, I apologize. I did speak with Ms. Docman today. She alerted me that we wouldn't have a full complement of the board, which, under the remand order, allows us to request a continuance, so we have done so. That was communicated to the board, or Ms. Docman, earlier today. And also, we did provide notice to Attorney Kirk as well.
Much appreciated. Attorney Clower, and I think the reason why we needed you was to sign an extension.
Yep, happy to do so.
And just so all the boards here, and there were additional engineering submitted to the file regarding the pilings.
Okay.
Are there going to be any other submissions, or do you think...
I don't, I don't believe so, unless there are additional questions come up at the next, at the next hearing. But we wanted to try to respond to some of the concerns that were raised. I'd prefer to wait till the next hearing to dive into what those submissions are.
Okay, so if that's it, then I would make a motion that we continue this to May 5th.
Second. That's a good date for the applicant.
All right. Motion continued to May 5th, made by Bob, seconded by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Did you want to take a break?
Yeah, if we could just, real quick, I just want to use the...
We'll take a quick five-minute break, and we'll be right back. All right, we are back, onto our new hearings. Up next, we have application sixteen dash twenty-two, Subermanium, eighteen Dusty Miller Road in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a third garage bay.
One second. Okay, application number sixteen dash twenty-two, Sundar and Mina Subermanium, three Corey Avenue Stoneham Mass, apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty, six point six B of the Code of Falmouth to allow a third garage bay on subject property known as eighteen Dusty Miller Road, Falmouth, Mass. For referrals, Concom has no comments. The project appears to be outside of Concom jurisdiction. Application was revised to impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Dustin Miller Road is a private right of way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. Drywells are recommended, oh, drywells are included in the design as recommended. We also recommend that we include in any approval subsection ninety-nine-one affixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence. Where this site slopes down to the street and the buttes to the north and west, we recommend erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the streets and abutting properties. We recommend the plans be revised to include demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. We ask that you add the following condition, construction of the project shall, shall follow the town soil erosion sediment control standard conditions. The document can be found on the engineering division's webpage of the town's website. Reference to the Department of Public Works and Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals, who is the permitting authority for the project. From water, the water main and service are on the plans as required, and the plans do conform to the Falmouth Water Department's standards. Sessions has no comment. Planning, no comment. Oh, there's no issues with the proposed addition of a third bay to the garage. Don't think. And that's it for the file.
All right. Attorney Clower, before we begin, you do have four of us, so any decision reached tonight would have to be unanimous.
Understood, thank you. For the record, my name's Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, and I'm here tonight representing the applicants, Sundar and Mina Subermanium. They are the owners of eighteen Dusty Miller Road here in Falmouth, and they are seeking permission to add a third garage bay to the proposed house at this residence, at the site. They have applied for and obtained a building permit absent the third garage bay. No construction has begun as of yet. I believe that building permit was issued either yesterday or today. Eighteen Dusty Miller Road is located in Sippewissett in the Racing Beach neighborhood. It's a good-sized lot. It's shy of twenty-four thousand square feet in the residential B zoning district. The applicant, as I mentioned, intends to build a new home. I think in my application, I said it was a four-bedroom per septic plant. It is in fact a five-bedroom home. I wanted to note that. And that construction is effectively completely by right. It meets all the lot coverage requirements for structure, for lot coverage by structure, paving, and parking, and it meets all of the required setbacks with some room to spare. However, they would like to add a third garage bay. This addition has no effect on the intended footprint. Garage, as constituted, would be eight hundred and fifty-two square feet. However, because it's under, the lot's under thirty thousand square feet, it does require a special permit. Under two forty-six point six B, which is formerly two forty thirty-eight G, there's no standards that are set forth in that portion of the bylaw relative to a special permit for garage, so we look to the standards of two forty twelve point one E, formerly two sixteen. The threshold question under that is, does the proposed use have adverse effects that overbalance the beneficial effects to the neighborhood and to the town? This lot is more than adequate in size. The proposed third garage bay does not change the footprint, does not change the nature of the intended use. It only increases the owner's utilization. There's no impact on traffic flow or safety. At the risk of oversimplifying this, I believe that this meets the requirements under two forty-six point six B and twelve point one E. I would ask the board grant a special permit. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. We'll turn it to board questions. James, anything?
Any reason why the applicant wants a third car, three-car garage?
He wants a three-car garage.
Same reason Kevin wanted one.
Yep.
No other questions, thank you.
Scott?
Nope.
Bob?
Nope.
No questions from either. All right, public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Sure? Sure, come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, along with any question, comment, or concern that you may have.
For the record, my name is Ben Dixon. I live at Fortin Dustin Miller Road. You can see that our property obeys the property right here, we're the closest neighbors to the, to the proposed new construction. Our concerns are rather straightforward. Obviously, it affects our privacy. We have a couple of trees that are on the border exactly, which we are concerned that because of the closeness of the property, the roots may be damaged and trees might be damaged. So that's pretty much our concerns regarding the proposed construction.
To the best of your knowledge, are those trees that you're describing, are they on the property line themselves?
They're right on the property line, they're...
Right here on the property line. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
Attorney Clower, has any, was that the first time you've heard that concern?
I spoke with them just a moment ago, prior to this hearing started. What I did offer to do is connect them with the applicants, who are really lovely people, and I'm sure would be willing to work with them to address concerns over privacy and trees.
You have no, you, you don't have any heartache about any kind of conditions with respect to saving those trees and the drip line?
I mean, I think there, I think that every effort can be taken, but at the same time, I don't know where those trees stand relative to the property line. I think that the best thing we can probably do is show good faith, and like I said, I'm happy to connect them with the applicants directly. These people are going to be neighbors. I think they have every, every intent to work well with their neighbors. It doesn't behoove them to, to come in and clear-cut everything and, and say, "It's my way of the highway." That's certainly not been my impression of these people. They're, they're really quite lovely, so I'm sure they'd be happy to speak with their, with their neighbors about finding a way to preserve that as much, in as much as it can be.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Did they, did they have any kind of landscape plan for the, I know you, you may not have it tonight, but did they have one?
No, no, I, you know, typically for a general building permit, you, you don't have one prepared, nor, nor would be for a special permit of this nature.
One more, if you might, if you don't mind. So you said it doesn't affect the footprint?
Mm-hmm.
So the size of the garage with three bays is how...
They're going to have the same size footprint whether they have two bays or three.
Because they go in the back one?
Because, so the, I was just mentioning the architectural plans.
No, that, you don't even need to go that with, I mean, it's going to be the same. If it was a two-car garage, you wouldn't have to come before us anyway. It'd be the same thing.
As I mentioned, the building permit's already been issued.
That, you don't have to go into, I mean, that's self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none. Anyone like to make a motion?
So, we'll motion close.
I'll second it.
Motion closed made by Bob, second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Motion to approve the conditions?
I'll second. Go ahead, Rob, give that to Bob.
Motion to approve with conditions made by Bob and second by James. Findings?
So the applicant is just adding a third garage bay. It does not affect the square footage, grading, or roof changes. They're not adding any additional bedrooms other than what's in their building permit of a five-bedroom. These two forty-six point six B and all aspects of two forty dash twelve point one E will increase the utilization of the property for the homeowners. The property is new construction. And a butterhead concern on screening trees that may be on the property line, and it's asked that they try to protect the root systems of those trees to save those trees.
Anything else for findings?
Put, I, well, put in there the engineering has requested demarcated limit of work along with the sediment erosion control standards. I put there that the, the property will meet the Falmouth Water Department's standards. I'll put that the drywells are on the plans, and also that the water lines are on the And you can add in there, knowing that when they, regarding their soil erosion and the limit of work, it's because the, the site slopes down to the street, to the butters to the north and the west.
Reference to the lot size, this would be construction by right with the exception of request for the third car, third bay garage.
Yeah, but they're only here just for the permission for the garage bay itself.
Setbacks are good, lot coverage is good.
And put for the, put in, in a finding that they've already applied and received a building department, permit for the project, but have not done any construction regarding the garage bay.
Did you put in there the garage bay remains the same, the footprint remains the same whether it's two or three?
Yeah, we have that in there, same square footage. Where you put they got a building permit, maybe put because the project is not adding any square footage, they have applied and received a building permit for the building department, but have not added the third bay. We've had some that apply in advance.
All right, move it on to conditions?
Yeah, so we're going to go per plans. We're going to add sediment erosion and soil control standards where the zoning board goes in place of the Department of Public Works. We're going to throw in subsection ninety-nine-one affixing of legible numbers and time limit for compliance. We're going to put that they demarcated work lines be shown on the plans. We're going to put in the hours, normal hours, all construction materials and vehicles be kept on site, and also condition regarding those trees that are on the lot line.
Excuse me, just every effort that could be made.
Yeah.
You can't dictate definitively.
No, but you add in, add in it that if the trees are on the lot line, that they make every, every effort they can to save the root systems so that the trees don't die back.
I mean, certainly, the property line itself would be surveyed, so it should be pretty quick to determine.
And it seems like it's got, it seems like it's got enough room.
Sometimes bigger trees, you, you share a drip line, you share overhang, you, and that, you know how contentious that can become at some point.
Yeah, so those ones, yeah, would be...
So that, I think, at the very least, every effort should be in the language.
Yeah, and they've got plenty of, looks like they have plenty of space anyways, so.
Yep.
I think that just as well does it for conditions?
Yes, sir.
So that was a motion to approve. You all set though?
Yeah.
Do you want any supplementary screening installed if they're not able to save those trees?
I would say something, but they're only here for us with the garage bay, and the garage access is on the other side of the house, so I just don't think we have the...
Yeah, that's not even in our, I mean...
I mean, because the permit's already issued for the square footage. If they, if it was set up differently...
They could build it just like that right now. They're just eliminating a garage door and a cutout in the foundation and an apron.
You could put it, under a finding, that the applicant has, the applicant's representative discussed it with the butter, and that the owners are amenable to try to save the trees. And likely, the owners will probably want screening now anyways.
All right, so that was a motion approved with conditions made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so up next, I'll talk slow. Application seventeen dash twenty-two, Weidenfeller, fifty-three Alcott Road in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct additions, attached garage, and dormer to the second floor of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
So, application seventeen dash twenty-two, George L. Weidenfeller, five zero one two Hawthorne Place, Northwest Washington, DC, apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty ten point two A four of the Code of Falmouth to construct additions, attached garage, and dormer to the second floor of the pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as fifty-three Alcott Road, East Falmouth. For referrals, Concom has no comments. It seems to be outside their jurisdiction. From Health Department, the existing and proposed floor plans indicate no increase in bedrooms, which is four. Health will allow the twelve-foot setback to the cesspool, providing the slab dust cap sits at an elevation higher than the leaching portion of the cesspool. Basically, Health will impose the slab setback of ten feet rather than the crawl space setback of twenty feet, in Title V only if the slab is higher than the cesspool. From Engineering, application was reviewed to impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Alcott Road is a public right of way in this area. Proposed site alterations of work in the public right of way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. We requested the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the Engineering Division prior to closing the hearing, or the board condition the following: The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit. Note that additional information will be required for the driveway permit, including proposed grades and stormwater management for the driveway. Any comments or, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. There appears to be illustration issues with the existing conditions plan. The proposed driveway is shown on this plan, and it isn't clear if dry, if the drywells on this plan are existing or proposed. If the drywells are existing, we recommend the applicant's engineer confirm that they have the capacity to take the additional roof area, and the board condition, add a condition that requires the new roof areas to be connected to them, or additional drywells be included in the design. If the drywells are proposed, we recommend the board add a condition that requires the new roof area to connect to the drywells at a minimum. Where this is a lot on a public way and a driveway permit is necessary, we will require erosion and sediment controls are included within the permit application to protect the town right of way. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. Where the lot is small and the work is close to abutting properties, we recommend the following be included, construction of the project shall follow the town soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions, document found on the Engineering Division's page of the town website. The plans are not endorsed. We recommend properly endorsed plans be submitted. From Water, the water main and service are on the plans as required. The existing service is only three-quarter. The current Falmouth Water Department standards will require a one-inch. The water flow and pressure demands are expected to increase due to the proposed work, so that's why one-inch upgrade is recommended. Sessions, no comment. I don't see any additional, I don't see any additional letters that can be submitted.
And Attorney Clower, again, there's four members, so any decision reached tonight, it would have to be unanimous.
Understood. Hello again, good evening. For the record, Kevin Clower with Amen Clower Law Firm. I'm here tonight representing George L. Weidenfeller, the owner of fifty-three Alcott Road in East Falmouth. We are here tonight seeking approval to renovate and modify the existing non-conforming dwelling. This property is located in Great Harbors. It's a well-established residential neighborhood at the southern end of Acapescot Road. This particular lot is twelve thousand three hundred square feet. It's located in the residential B zoning district, and it is not in a flood zone. The, what exists is a one-and-a-half-story four-bedroom dwelling and shed. Total footprint is just under a thousand square feet. It's eight percent lot coverage by structure. However, it is non-conforming to the front yard setback being twenty-three point five feet where twenty-five is required, into the side yard setback to the south being seven point eight feet where ten is required. It complies with lot coverage requirements, and the existing ridge height is twenty-one feet. The applicant has proposed some additions, which would include a garage to the north and additional habitable space to the east of the home. This would result in a first-floor master, the addition of a family room and a garage, which the site currently lacks. It would not affect the non-conforming setbacks or create any new non-conformities. The proposed ridge height of the garage would be nineteen feet, and the proposed ridge height of the bedroom addition would be fourteen feet, both below the existing ridge height. Due to the existing non-conformities, this does however require a special permit under two forty ten point two A, which is formerly two forty three C, wherein pre-existing non-conforming structures can be changed by special permit, and this board is asked to find if the proposed alteration is substantially more detrimental than what exists. In order to determine this, we consider the standards of two forty twelve point one E, and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, compares views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new non-conformity created. The existing non-conforming setbacks to front yard and side yard are unaffected, and it otherwise complies with the side yard setback to the north and the rear yard setback. We will also comply with lot coverage requirements. Though the footprint increases, the resulting lot coverage by structure is fifteen point six percent, which is well below the twenty percent allowed by right. There's no impacts to views and vistas from public ways. The structure as designed remains consistent with the surrounding neighborhood in size and in scope. This proposed alteration is an improvement in the space for the applicant's use. Again, it creates a first-floor master, creates a garage, creates additional habitable space. It will not create any new non-conforming, non-conformities, or impact the existing non-conformities. It will result in an attractive useful dwelling in character with the neighborhood. I don't believe there's any adverse effects to what was described, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits. I believe it meets the requirements of two forty ten point two A and two forty twelve point one E. Based on this, I would ask that the board grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have this evening.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions? James, anything?
Questions, thank you.
Scott?
Attorney Clower, you understand that if... Attorney Clower, you understand that if, um, uh, the Health Department's concerns with respect to the grade on water level and slab level aren't, aren't, uh, adhered to, then it does create a non-conformity.
Understood. I think that, you know, I think it's important to remember this isn't a blanket approval. We need to obtain a building permit and, uh.
Talking about the T. We're talking about water level inside the cesspool, not.
No, I understand. I, I discussed that with, with Mr. Borcelli, uh, when the referral came in.
Yeah, I know you understand, but the, the installer or whoever's putting that in needs to understand when they shoot that grade, so, I mean. Because that, that changes everything, that one statement about grade and water level at the T. Thanks. Thank you, Ms. James.
Thank you, Scott. Bob, anything?
Yeah, so are the dry wells, are they existing or proposed?
No, my understanding is those are proposed. Uh, if you look at the existing plan, it, it wouldn't make much sense to have a dry well set, you know, forty feet north of the property.
Okay, so we can just condition them on the proposed dry wells.
Alright, and I don't have any questions myself, so on the public comment, any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Pro's made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Uh, motion to approve with conditions.
Motion approved with conditions.
Second.
By Bob, second by James. Thank you, James. Findings?
Uh, two forty, ten point two A, two forty, twelve point one E, um, all aspects there. Non-conformities at a front yard setback. Uh, twenty-three, uh, feet five inches where twenty-five feet is required in the southwest side yard setback, which is at seven point eight where twenty-five is required. They're gonna be due additions to the rear and northern side. There will be no increase in bedrooms remaining at four. There will be no new dimensional non-conformities.
I would ask that Scott's comment be put into the findings and with, um, with respect to grade on that.
Yep, so we can add, um, Scott's.
Cause it's not a Title V, it's actually a cesspool that he's blessing on this.
We also want to add in the, uh, Health Department's comments to the findings regarding septic and also the, um, the, uh, Engineering's Department's findings regarding, uh, whether the dry wells are proposed or existing. The testimony is that the dry wells are proposed, so we will be conditioning them. That they be connected to the proposed dry wells in the house. Uh, you could put in a finding that, uh, Engineering is also asking for erosion and sediment controls and they will need to apply for a driveway permit.
Proposed additions below the existing ridge height.
You could pull the ridge height from the plan. Also, the existing water service is only three-quarter and will need to, um, upgrade to a one-inch. Also put that the water main, um, the water main and service are depicted on the plans. Also put that additional information will be required for the driveway permit, including proposed grades and stormwater management for the driveway.
Alright, anything else for findings?
Uh, also put a finding that the plans are not endorsed.
We submitted endorsed plans.
Okay. So then put in the finding that the comment of Engineering, but that the applicant did submit endorsed plans.
Move on to conditions?
Yeah, so per plans, uh, applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division prior to the start of construction. And the applicant shall complete the work as approved by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit. The, um, shutters and downspouts must be connected to the new proposed dry wells for roof runoff. The project, construction of the project shall follow the town soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions documents found on the Engineering Division's page on the town's website. Condition it under four bedroom, remaining a four-bedroom. Condition on upgrading the water service from a three-quarter to one-inch to meet Falmouth Water Department standards. Uh, work hours, uh, all construction vehicles and materials to be kept on site. And then condition it on the comments from the Health Department.
Yeah, Borcelli puts that on the plan that when they go to install or set grades for that, it'll just iterate.
Yeah.
Importance of that, of that benchmark there.
Alright.
So you want the plan upgraded, I mean, updated for the limited work.
Yeah, a lot of work to do along with the further soil erosion and sediment controls. And, and they should also put in the plan that those, they should also relabel the dry wells if they are proposed dry wells, so they're not existing.
Very good. So if that does it, that was motion approved with conditions made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Clower.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Oh, good. You should've put them first. You should've come first.
I see it every year.
I know, I just, I get to, I get tied up in it. I, I'll, I'll leave a note for next year that, that you get to go first.
Alright, so the next application needs no introduction at all, but it is application eighteen dash twenty-two, Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Inc., twelve twenty, Nathan S. Ellis Highway, East Falmouth. Requesting a special permit to allow non-agricultural events with associated parking and parking for a fee.
So, application eighteen dash twenty-two, Barnstable County Agricultural Society, Inc., twelve twenty, Nathan S. Ellis Highway, East Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty-six point one, two forty-four point, four point one I, two forty-five point one F, and two forty-five point one B. Of the code of Falmouth to allow non-agricultural events with associated parking and parking for a fee on subject property known as twelve twenty Nathan Ellis Highway for referrals. It's outside of Concom jurisdiction. No issues or comments from Health, no comments from Engineering, no comments from Water, no comments from Planning. Um, there was a request, uh, from the Fire Department that we add this information into the new permit. Uh, so regarding, um, so regarding Cape Cod Fairgrounds, so due to the extreme hazard of electrical distribution system, they want to address some of the immediate issues that need to be done prior to opening of the fairgrounds for events. Uh, one, the public announcement system appears not to be operational and that must be active and operational. Two, all PVC green-colored electrical handholds need to be replaced with concrete ones that are suitable for support of vehicle traffic. Three, all electrical panels exposed to the elements must be weathered tight. All openings, including blank breaker spots, must be filled. We would prefer that all panels are to be lockable, only accessible by qualified personnel. Four, all exposed wiring at the entrance area that needs to be addressed cannot have any open splices, must have terminated in a weatherproof box. And all branch circuits must be of the UF or in conduit suitable for the environment. And five, high voltage line that was defective last year in the area of the kids' rides must be addressed. Um, plan in place for replacement or removal of that line. Uh, these are some other issues they've asked to be addressed. Uh, the solar field that is located off Courier Road entrance parking area, the solar installer had dug up a feeder that, that feeds the area where the rides are parked. That must be addressed. The solar installer is aware of the situation and seems to be avoiding it. Two, an emergency service.
Say that again?
So, they dug up that area and the, um, solar installer is aware of it, but he seems to be avoiding it. They're gonna have to have that addressed. Two, the emergency services building needs to have a backup power capability, for example, a portable generator. Three, a power plan, uh, needs to be submitted to the Building Department and Electrical Department. This should include all power sources mapped out and where sub feeders are fed from, the power panels. This plan will be made available and posted at the Fairgrounds Office for immediate review. Four, all panels must be labeled. Labeling must meet the requirements of one-ten point two-two as to where they are fed from. This plan will be available at the Fairgrounds Office and the marking shall be of sufficient durability to withstand environmental, environment that's involved. And they put a copy of, uh, one-ten dash, uh, point twenty-two, identification of disconnecting means. Each disconnecting mean shall be legibly marked to indicate its purpose unless located in a range so that purpose is evident. In other than one or two family dwellings, the marking shall include the identification of the circuit source that supplies the disconnecting means. Um, electrical inspections are to be coordinated two weeks prior to any event with the electrical inspector. And again, uh, this is coming from, um, Building and Fire, um, so they want all these included in the current.
Any other thoughts?
Nope, that is it.
Well, hello, we have addressed all these things. Of course, there's been a big change in power in, uh, the town, so it's a different electrical inspector who basically was the one that introduced this list. The Fire Department did not. Um, the Fire Department addressed it during the fair. I didn't get this new list till almost February. And of course, we're working feverishly. Handholds are the biggest issue at this point because supply and demand, we've only been able to get eight in, but all the other work is done. Um, just coordinating with whatever department I need to meet with, um, cause I guess electrical inspections are once a week in Falmouth now, so getting anybody out there right now is, has been a bit difficult. Um, addressing to the solar that really, it's not our permit with them, so we redirected them to solar. Um, other than that, it's business as usual, except that we have four parking lots being covered with solar, which is exciting, and lots of ponds and lakes right now, but, um, everything's been waylaid because of supply and demand, so the finish date is two weeks before the fair, so cross our fingers. We do not have any events till the fair. Um, I will work with the, uh, new building commissioner, who's, uh, worked with us very nicely. Um, I do have one event in May. As you know, it's not, it is agricultural, so it's not, it's just a matter of him coming down and looking to see that we've replaced the handholds, um, where that event will take. It's just the Master Gardener Plant Sale. It's two hours long. Other than that, I don't see any other issues. Um, events are pretty much the same. Um, there was a new one that we got permission from last year. Um, and they are postponing for another year because of, um, sponsorship. Everything's just dried up right now with the economy the way it is, so. We go to the fair at the middle of July and then, uh, last event is in November and there's no new events there. I do have other requests, which I will hope I can get administrative. It's like the Family Day from the base. They're looking at doing that, that kind of thing, and hopefully I can get that administratively approved.
Most of that's easy. Do you know, so who is the contract with for the solar?
Um, Soul Systems is, who is the parent company that we signed the lease with. MeLink is, are the actual people that are on the grounds doing the work. They're, they're sub, the subcontractor. Um, they're responsible for the lease to pull all, um, permits and I, I know what happened and it, I'm not gonna address any, any personalities here, but.
No, no, that's okay, but I'm, I'm just wondering. So your permit is, i- i- is with the original person, so.
Our lease is with the original per- any permits for that land or, uh, electrical permits all go through that company, not us.
And you didn't have any, so there was nothing in the lease? There was nothing written in the lease that if there was an issue that they would be responsible for it?
They're responsible for it. Yeah, in our terms, they're responsible for all permitting and adhering to them, and it was really just a pull of a trigger that happened one day and the next day it was resolved, so. It was just the wrong, the, the wrong person was talked to, not the actual person.
So it's already been resolved?
Yeah, it was resolved months ago.
It, uh, I got, uh, I, it was like a, it was I Ladio's last, um, meeting, I think I was, and it was resolved the next day. It was just a communication error.
So, Noreen, regarding adding in this, is some of these items have been resolved, can we, um, just condition it that there be an updated list only to include any items that haven't been resolved off of the list?
I have a response that I was supposed to go back to the, um, they were supposed to have another meeting, which with the change of.
Yeah, they just didn't, they just didn't send anything to us, so.
It just never, it just never happened, cause I handed it to the electrical inspector and he said, "I do not want it." That they'll, will contact you to have a meeting on it, but ninety percent of this work has already been completed. I've met with the Police and Fire Department. They know the PA system's operational, so I just needed guidance from you, how you want me to.
So if we, so, because this is the only form that we have, if we just include these in, in, in it.
So you can.
It would be okay because she would already say we've complied with one, two, three.
Right, she can condition, we can condition.
We can condition it like it's shown.
The approval, and then we can further have.
And then just check it off on which ones were taken care of.
Building Department and Fire Department confirm that those conditions are met.
Okay, that way there's no holdup.
I'd clean it up.
Yeah, that way there's no holdup.
Good with questions, Bob?
Yeah, make over the plan, so.
Alright, Scott?
I just have nothing to do with this. Are there any charging stations in, uh, um, all that new infrastructure?
There, there aren't right now. Um, we've had some issues with some people and it made it impossible to.
Alright, I don't wanna get into.
To put, to put them in.
I don't wanna get into.
Our, our plan for.
It was just a, it was just.
Our plan for the future is, yes, we will be, we will be adding.
Well, I figure you got all the conduit under the ground and you've got.
Right, right. It's just not gonna happen in this round and we will do it ourselves, um.
Excellent. That, that, that was just out of curiosity, that's all.
No, there will be eventually, yes.
James, anything?
No, my question's been answered. Thank you.
And I always ask about, uh, upcoming new events, but you already addressed all those, so all set there? Uh, public comment? Any questions, comments, or concerns? Richard? Nothing?
Nothing.
Alright, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion, uh, motion to close made by Bob, second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Alright, motion approved with conditions made by Bob, second by James.
Alright, all the new ones. Okay, so, uh, two forty-six point one, the two forty-fourteen point one I, two forty-five point one F, and two forty-five point one B. I hate the new system. Um, so those are the new findings. We'll also put in there the finding of new information that was sent to us by the Building Department. Um, and it, it was from January twenty-eighth. It listed. Let me just grab it really quick. So this was a list, um, sent from the Building Department in behalf of the Building Department and Fire Department of the, um, items that they, that they wanted taken care of and some additional issues to be addressed. Testimony from the applicant is that they already have addressed many of these items on the list. We'll, we will include these items in the conditions and then the ones that are, are taken care of would automatically be. Yeah, and that's to include also, Noreen, that electrical inspections are to be coordinated two weeks prior to any event with an electrical inspector. Um, you could also put in the finding that the applicant, um, due to the inspect, the times allowed for the electrical inspector, they've had problems getting them out there.
To no fault of their own.
No, it's just their scheduling.
Staffing.
Yeah, so maybe we'll add that, that due to town staffing, it's been a problem, so that, um, if that occurs again, the applicant could discuss it with town management.
And, uh, if there's any, you mentioned it in testimony, I'm not sure if we mentioned it in our findings or conditions, but if there's any additional, uh, things planned, then that could be administratively approved through Noreen if it's a non-agricultural event. And, am I missing anything? Any other?
No, the only issue I have with that, and, and maybe there's a way to word it, that they could be, um, approved by the administrator, cause there may be ones that, let's say it's a banned situation, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that's just checking boxes off. I mean, it's.
It's within the typical.
Right.
Yeah, I'm only bringing up because they had, not by fault of the applicant, but there had been issues.
Yeah, but they have a well, a, a good track record. I mean, it's, that's not something you even need to consider, I mean.
No, no, we just get to a blanket, non-agricultural events. We just have to say could be done by the administrator.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense.
That's it.
All right, yeah, I'm just, um, taking a glance at last year's permit, I think we got.
Yeah, everything else would, you know, continue over from the last, it's still valid from the last years.
All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob, second by James, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Good luck this season.
Wow.
Yeah, wow, that was right.
And for the record, it is eight thirty.
Congratulations.
Moving right on to our open meeting items, voting the minutes for March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, and ta, uh, April seventh, twenty twenty, I think we're tabling.
Tabling, tape.
All right, March twenty-fourth, would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to, uh, approve the March minutes.
All right, motion to approve the March twenty-fourth minutes, is there a second?
Aye, I mean, yes.
Second by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, passes unanimously. Tabling April seventh, board updates, anything?
No, uh, recodification, we're still working on it. Meeting's coming up later in May. Um,
I guess you could put in, if, if, if any of the members of the board think about it in advance, if they have any changes they think might be important for the board in the codification that might come up, maybe make a list and send them to Noreen.
Sure.
Um, because what we would do is at, at some meeting, we would, uh, compile a list, just take a quick vote and just say that we would like, um, that expressed to the committee that these are items, and you may do it in a priority, if there's certain things that we've been hitting a lot that we need changed. Um, just for an example, uh, we've had a lot of questions regarding setbacks with what's a step and what's a landscape features, things like that.
Sure.
We've had issues with, if we can get that changed in the codification, uh, we won't have to worry about back and forths anymore on the.
What's the focus right now, Bobby? Do, are, do you circulate an agenda with, uh, certain items that you might hit?
So they do different sections at a time, and they're, and this is going to be going over from, you know, November town meeting and next year, and they're trying to divide them out and do them in priorities. Um, yeah, but in planning is kind of putting everything together, but it's, from what I get from the meetings, it's, any concerns we have, the sooner we get them to them, just to even keep them on a side list, the better.
Okay.
And then they're going to pick and choose which ones they think they can handle, but like, we might want to say to them that, you know, these certain items, create a setback or something, or something that we think is really important to us, that we want handled in the November town meeting.
Got it.
Instead of waiting till next spring, and even though they hadn't planned on it, they would then hopefully listen to what we need and say that for those items, we'll put them in. Other than that.
All right, anything else for board updates? Or discussion?
I do have one item.
Yeah.
Which is that for the next week, we're going to have halftime office hours in the zoning board. Um, that's been reviewed with town manager, and it's due to a staffing issue, or lack of a staffing issue. So where we have certain decisions that need to get out in a timely way, the intent is that the office will be open mornings. And then we will have the office itself closed in the afternoons, but the planning board has been willing to have people go to their office if they need an application, or they want to see plans, or that type of thing.
The, the planning board doesn't give any advice or any direction at all, right?
No, no, not, no, strictly.
With respect to zoning, right?
Right, strictly to ensure that if there's somebody particularly from out of town who doesn't have an opportunity to come back or something, that they can at least get their contact information so that we can get back.
All right.
Nothing that would be appealable in a case with, with regard to guidance or discussion.
No, no, just to make sure that we're trying to help the public.
So as far as the reviewing of plans, can they just refer them to the, well, I guess if they have website access, just refer them to our.
So, right, so what will happen is they'll either advise people that they can access on the website all the plans, but they can also come to our office and borrow the file if somebody's there and needs to see the paper copy.
Borrowed?
Well, so they can come to the office, because I will be there, I just.
But, but, yeah, make no mistake, I mean, the, the files can't leave the office.
Right, right.
So where would they review them in the office?
They could take them to the conference room that's within the suite.
Now, is that just this week?
Yes.
Not from now on?
No, yep, just a temporary.
It is what it is.
All right.
Yeah, I guess just make note that once, and I understand they're conference rooms, but when you start moving files around, if nobody's.
We don't have a meeting next week either.
No, no, that's not my, that's not my, my concern, is that if they're going to a conference room or somebody look at files, planning, somebody should be there. I'm worried about stuff disappearing from the files, it's, it's very common. If they're doing it in a room and can see somebody, they're not going to do anything, but if they're just.
We can ensure that somebody's present.
Yeah, just make sure somebody's present for anything in the files, and they should actually, the, the other thing they should do because of the situation we're in is they should sign a, um, check, name, address, telephone, review file.
For the sake of argument, this past week, if you had to guess, how many, how many people came in to review files, other than attorneys?
It's pretty infrequent. We usually get, I guess, maybe a couple of people a week.
Yeah, I'm guessing they have to allow it.
So it wouldn't be something, you'd have to keep getting up and, and securing files and all of that?
Yeah, as long as they secure it and have a sign-in sheet.
And, and certainly you would have to say to them that nothing is to be removed from this file, blah, 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 blah.
And then if they go to planning, planning has to be very specific that they can't answer any specific questions.
Well, no, because that would become appealable issues. Well, they said.
I would just say, we're just showing you, these are the plans, and that's about it.
All right, anything else? Future agenda items?
Uh, well, I don't know if it's discussion or future agenda items, but, um, we have one board member going off, we have a second who could be elected, and a third whose term is up in June. Conceivably, half the regular members are going to, could change over by June. Do we know if, or have we had any input from the selectmen if they're going to announce or post, or?
Well, they can't, if, if I'm lucky enough to be elected, they can't post until that night.
So that's the issue.
And I hand in my resignation, so they can't post for a position that isn't open yet.
So if Scott's elected to the select board the following week, that fall, actually.
That night.
Yeah, was that?
That night's a Tuesday, yeah.
He'll be getting a call and a text.
If it's on Tuesday, as of Wednesday, they could actually put an ad out, which then has to go the thirty days.
Um, for his seat only.
For his seat only. Um, the issue comes in, even if you give them a date, they still can't advertise right now because of the way the charter, until that date. So you'll be getting.
So I think we have at least two positions that we have a definitive date on, though.
They can't unless, until they've got the, they know when it will be, but they physically can't advertise in advance. That's, that's the problem they've gotten into with all of these, unless they change something in the charter. So you'll know that, you know, Scott would be the first position that would be available, because his thirty days, which would be sent out early June. Um, if we have a member that, that, um, I assume may not renew, um.
I don't know if we want to defer this to Noreen, but, gee, I think we need to stay on top of the selectmen, because we're going to have a quorum problem if one of us gets sick.
Right.
And I don't want to see constructive grants.
No, I don't think any of us do, but we're also, hands are kind of tied by the town charter.
I understand.
When, when we can.
The town may also want, you may want to talk to the town about a change to the charter that suggests if they're notified of a date, they can at least start taking application and doing advance interviews based on what that next date will be.
Given the circumstances and this is.
If they change it, the chart, and they probably can't do it at the town meeting, but either way, that's something they should probably look into right now. They're doing a change for the deadlines.
Like, I think at a minimum, if you go somewhere on the town's website, I think it, it at least says when each seat expires. But that's entirely different from advertising.
But again, even, even, but that's the same thing, even on the ones that expire, if you expire that night,
That's, yeah.
It's, it's a weird thing.
Well, you may or may not expire that night.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's weird. I mean, everyone has to come re-up for an appointment on those dates, so they're just a given date every.
Right.
Um, and then what they usually do is just, is this thirty days before that.
Right.
They just do an opening that says if people are interested in positions. The other thing is this, maybe the selectmen put out an ad or something that just says, in general across the board, anyone looking to serve on any of the boards in town.
Please see the webpage.
Should just submit the application in.
And then they could review it thirty di, after the thirty days, or just.
Yeah, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the regulations are anymore on, um, on interviews, I assume they're all live now, but, you know, sometimes somebody might be away for an interview, I don't know if they can make exceptions for Zoom interviews sometimes, too.
I think they've had a practice in the past of at least keeping applications and resumes on file.
They have, they just, you know, that's an idea, too, if they're on file, maybe they should start checking to see if.
Well, I know for a fact they have, because my application went in prior to the, a board opening, just to have it in the system.
Yeah, they should just check with those, I mean, they could always check with those now and say that, no, there's going to be some upcoming positions. We just want to make sure, do you want to update anything, or are you still interested in applying?
Don't forget, we, yeah, there, there were some other applicants prior to that, too.
So if anyone out there is watching tonight and interested in joining the board.
Get your papers in.
Yep, send everything into the select board.
Yeah, I guess the only thing is on forty Bs, you have a little bit of protection, because you can go with. I think it's three.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, next.
Oh, just a quick, quick, and I don't know, just to the administrator, no, no, really quick, then we'll get out of here. On, um, because of the new selectmen thing about disclosures, so if we have disclosures that have already been filed, those now have to go in front of the select board, correct?
So, yes, so if you, if you.
I'm just saying, if there's one that's filed now, and any processes, they should be in front of the board.
If you plan or expect to vote on a case, you do need select board action to grant that request, as opposed to in the past, I think it was just paperwork was filled out, like, as paperwork, right, as opposed to the select board taking an action, that being said.
So if any of those are currently filed, they need.
It should be, right, a specific request relating to a specific property that is in the future, right?
Yeah, because there's certain.
As opposed to.
No, I'm only bringing it up, because I, and I don't remember, and I could be wrong, but I think there may be some active ones in files now that would now have to go in front of the select board.
Because you need some protection from when you look up and you realize that somebody's on that or involved in that thing that you didn't have time to disclose on, it's a last-minute disclosure.
Right, that being.
You do this number, hey, Mr. Chairman, I got to disclose, because I didn't realize this was what was going on.
That's what I'm trying to get by.
That, that comes up, but I think if you, for example, know that you're in a butter to a proposal.
Oh, no, no, prior to, yeah.
Right, or you know the applicant, but there aren't sufficient board members, you know, there are circumstances, but that being said, it should not be a blanket approval that.
No, I'm just saying, if, if there's any that we have now that are active in a file, make sure they're either in front of the select board, or they're not involved with the application.
Just to be clear, Noreen, that, that's for all disclosures, not just.
Yeah.
So a couple of weeks ago, there was, there was an AG's opinion that specifically referenced if you live in close proximity as in a butter. But this process is for all potential disclosures.
Right, so, you know, in best case, if you were in a butter and you had a full contingency of the board, you would just recuse.
Yep.
Because that's the proper thing to do. That being said, if you have a circumstance where there's a lack of a quorum and you may be required to participate, that would be.
That certainly has to be defined where we can put our hand on it, because you know you're going to run into the gray area some, at some point, and you can't have it both ways, I mean, without it cle, clearly defined, right?
Right, and I think the other part is board consent, such that if somebody asks for, uh, select board approval and select board grants it, but you have a concern about that, I guess you would be able to act on that as.
It's more for situations when someone is not going to recuse, but wants to make a disclosure about the appearance of impropriety.
There you go.
You never have to worry about recusing.
No, no.
You can just, you can just recuse.
Right, right.
But if you, if you say that, here it is, but I'm refusing to recuse, then.
That's a different, that's when you need to get the.
Okay.
All right, next hearing, May fifth, see everyone there.